Joe Abdella.
Here.
John Badiuto. Did he say here?
Yeah.
Greg Kava.
Here.
Angela, I'm gonna, I always want to just, how do I say? Matthew.
Matthew Rulo here.
I'm gonna get it, I am. After all these years, I'm gonna. Um, Alex McNaulson. Justin Angli.
Here.
John Pody here, Lisa Roush. Candace Schitzel. Julie Stewart.
Yeah.
Peter Tagley. Mary Weber. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Could I ask everyone to turn the volume on your laptop off? And that way we'll stop the echoes. And if you have any other device tuned into the meeting, please turn the volume off. Thank you. Whoops, still on somewhere. Okay. All right, we'll now move on to the item on public comment on agenda items. Is there any member of the public who would like to speak at this point? Please, please use the raise feature and we'll, I don't know who this is. It says guest RJC.
Yeah, Randy Carrera. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes, who are you? Please identify yourself in your town.
Randy Carrera, Washington.
Okay, thank you.
Can I comment now?
Please.
Certainly, yeah, I saw number D on your agenda. I was just curious if they were going to have a posted curriculum. And if, if this presentation involves this anti racism and anti meritocracy movement.
Do you want to address that? Well, normally we don't, but.
Typically, we don't, but I can just clarify if the agenda topic was not clear. This is support for our long range planning. This is not about curriculum or instruction directly given to our students at the start.
Okay, and other questions?
I'm assuming there will be some presentation that may articulate.
I'm sorry, you still have your hand up, sir.
Oh, okay, I'll put it down. How do I shut this off here? Just mute?
Good question.
I'm not, I don't mean to, I'm going to look and see if I can unraise my hand on this gadget. I'm not quite in the.
Good, I think you're, I think your hands down. And it was, is there any other member of the public who would like to address us? I do not hear or see anyone. So we will move on with the rest of the agenda. First item, the next item is the consent agenda. There are minutes of the Board of Education meeting of October 4th. Would anyone like to take those off of the consent agenda for discussion or modification? I see none, I hear none. So those minutes will be automatically adopted. Now we will move on to the presentation for Connecticut Center for School Change, Partners for Educational Leadership presentation.
All right, it is with great pleasure that I am introducing the board to Richard Lemmons. He is, he runs the, I'm going to say the former name, which is the Connecticut Center for School Change. It has recently been rebranded, new name for the Partners for Educational Leadership. And the work that we have been talking about consulting with them is, is our long range planning. And how we're looking and what does the future of our district look like? And to make certain that we have people who are going to facilitate, who hear our community, who help drive us forward, who push us to question how we're currently doing things and how we need to change and grow as a district. And with that, I'm not going to promote it anymore because I'd like to turn it over to Richard. Please, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Superintendent. It was a pleasure to be with you this evening. The end of what I imagine is a long day for a number of you. And you, many of you have probably been staring into Zoom meetings for hours and hours on end. So I'll get directly into it. I'm going to share my screen so that I can bring up presentation, and hopefully you're seeing on your screen some photos. It says Region 12 Strategic Planning. Is that what you're seeing? Correct, great. So I wanted to spend some time this evening just giving an overview of what Partners for Educational Leadership, formerly known as Connecticut Center for School Change, who we are, what we do. And then I want to talk to you about some ideas that we have around strategic planning. And then happy to field any questions from the board at that time. So we, this is our team. I'm not going to go in and give you an introduction of each individual, but we have quite a number of folks who have been working in the field for a long time, almost comically a long time. Looks like we've got some reverb going again. Okay, we'll give this a shot. So the collectively, we have half a millennia of experience working directly in education, superintendents to teachers, instructional coaches, professors, researchers, almost any education position that you can imagine, from being a scholar in the higher ed space to leading think tanks. We've done that work. And most of us have been teachers and administrators at the building and central office level. We're also very proud to say that almost all of us are parents or grandparents and we're deeply involved in the educational experience that way. In terms of partners itself, the Connecticut Center for School Change, now known as Partners, has been around since 1999. We are a number of things people know about us, one of, one of which is we're the host of the longest continually operating superintendent's network in the country. We, which is the Connecticut Superintendent's Network. We work closely with district leaders predominantly in this state, occasionally outside the borders, but our, our commitment really is to the state of Connecticut. And we work shoulder to shoulder. What we mean by that is we don't, we don't sell split products and already packaged deliverables. We work directly with districts around what they see as the issues at hand, their problems of practice that are unique to the specific context. We have worked with numerous districts around strategic planning. And typically what we're doing in that process is serving as a process facilitator. We're, we're not coming in and telling districts what to do or how to approach things. We do know what, what approaches to strategic planning have worked better or less well in the past. And I'll share some of those ideas. And we also have some ideas of what the research clearly says won't work. But there's a, there's quite a bit of, of the universe that isn't in that category. And it really is up to the local conditions and context of a given district on what will work and what won't work. So our, our idea is to try to bring that out. We've written quite a bit about strategy and strategic planning, couple of bestselling books, and then numerous articles and monographs in trade magazines from the CAPPN to Ed Leadership to ASCP. So I want to talk to you about what we observe in the field, not just in public education, also in other sectors, but particularly in public education, as kind of typical approaches to strategic planning. And we're going to juxtapose that with some more atypical ones. And you're, I think you're, it's going to be kind of obvious which side of the slide deck I'm advocating for here. We are regularly working with school districts where the creation of a strategic plan is in some ways, it feels like they're just filling out the template. Okay, here's what we want to do. Here's the sheets of paper. Let's just plug words into the template that we've been given. And, and even if they're not saying it out loud, it has this compliance air to it. And it tends to shut down creative thinking. If people are mostly interested in finishing the document and not in thinking big about where a district can go. Sometimes strategic plans create a long list of activities where they've tried to identify everything under the sun that can be completed, often years in advance, four years out, five years out. Here's the 30 or 40 things we're going to do. The problem, there are numbers, number of problems to this. One is that these activities are often disjointed. There's long lists, they don't, they don't hang together conceptually. But another problem we have with this, especially for ones where they're trying to identify action plans years in advance, is often, we don't know what's going to happen three years from now, four years from now, five years from now. Conditions change, enrollment shifts, pandemic hits, for example. And it's very hard to predict that many years in advance. So getting very granular too early in the process can be a distraction. It can make us feel like we've got everything scoped out. But on most districts that I know of, by the time they get two or three years into the strategic plan, the small brain action items are less important than the big ideas, the big strategies for where they are going. Often strategic plans are owned by a small number of leaders in the system. Maybe it involves the board, maybe it's the superintendent and the cabinet. But it's not widely owned throughout the district and the community. And obviously that's problematic because any good strategic plan worth its weight is going to require that a number of people lean into the plan to make it happen. And if people don't understand it, they don't, they don't appreciate what's in it. They don't feel themselves in it, they're less likely to lean in in that way. Sometimes strategic plans are very reactive. They kind of focus on, well, here's what we are and let's, let's react to these things that have happened in the last couple of years. But they sometimes don't think about, well, what's, what's our forecast for what might happen in the, in our towns and in the state over the next several years? And can we think about how we might need to respond to those? Many strategic plans spend a whole lot of time talking about everything in education other than teaching and learning. And we know that that is classrooms are where students spend the majority of their educational time. And it's the place where we have the largest effect size in terms of learning and outcomes for young people. So we, we are often advocating for districts to have a very specific strategy for how they're approaching continuous improvement in the classroom. And then another big challenge, and this is well documented by one of my colleagues, Isabel Stevenson and her colleague Jenny Weiner, who, who wrote one of those books that I referenced earlier, is that often strategic plans just create lists of things to do. They, they regularly underestimate the capacity that needs to get built in the organization in order to do some of these new things. So often the work doesn't happen. And it's, and sometimes it gets framed as, well, people didn't buy in. Often the organization didn't create the conditions for people to be able to do the new strategies, the new initiatives well, because they didn't build the capacity. So that's, that's typical, we see this regularly. We see this in districts, small and large, suburban and urban, all spread in all geographic regions of the state. But there are some districts that engage this in more atypical ways. And I think you're, you're going to hear again that this is where I think the ideal of doing strategic planning ought to be. And from what I've heard from your superintendent, yours is a community that deeply cares about your, your students, you deeply care about the district, and you're used to doing things exceptionally well. And it sounds like this is kind of where your, your minds are. These are districts that focus on some, what is our thinking in a strategic plan? Not just a list of ideas, but what are we trying to pull off? And what's our best logic for how to do that? How do we organize schools? How do we, how do we organize educators? How, what's the kind of learning experience that we want all kids to have? And they test that. They don't just land on an answer and go on and assume that they had the right answer from the beginning. They keep trying to refine, they try, they keep trying to get smarter. And often because of that, there's this feel of generativeness where the, the community's in it, educators are in it. There's this sense that we're in this together. They tend to have a small number of high leverage improvement posts identified. And this is important because it gives the organization the ability to focus on certain things. But it also gives the organization the capacity to say no sometimes when, when too many things are being asked of the district and when something has the potential of moving it astray. In these districts, you can walk into the, any given school and you can drop into the average class at random. And you can talk to the para or the teacher and you say, what's the district working on? What's the school working on? And they might not parrot the exact language in the strategic plan, but they can tell you in their own words what's important in the district, what the improvement priorities are, and exactly what the district's doing. And, and in some districts, that individual person will be able to tell you quite elegantly, here is what that means for me. Here's what that means for my classroom tomorrow. Here's what that means for the professional learning community that I'm a part of. And that's a pretty powerful thing to happen. And I can say that I've been in numerous districts across the state where that doesn't quite happen, where you walk in and there's a lot of confusion in the average classroom around what they're working on. There's a sense of, of it being future oriented. These are plans where people really are thinking, well, how's the world going to be different by now? The world's going to be different 10 years. What's going to happen in our local community? And, and they're, they're asking those questions as they're identifying the strategic priorities. There are strategies that really do get right at the experience of young people in schools. They are focused on systems of how do we implement? They don't just come up with the plan and put it on the shelf and let it, but they spend time thinking about how will this plan matter in schools and in classrooms? What are the improvement routines? How will the board hold the district accountable? When will there be presentations to the board to give updates? All of that is kind of thought out and it's always being refined. And there's an effort in these districts to, to try to identify the capacities needed to execute the plan. So once the strategies are identified, these districts are spending time thinking about, well, what will we have to do to pull this off? It's one thing to have this in paper, but how do we execute this so that the average third grade classroom in a child sitting in that classroom really does experience the strategy as a positive way to benefit his or her learning? And I would just add to that, that those are kind of what happens at the end of the result. We think that there are some rather predictable practices that make it more likely that you end up on the right side there. One is, it's not just written by one or two people, that there's a collection of people who represent different roles, different perspectives, and they make a kind of a core planning team whose job it is to bring in ideas and to do the heavy lifting of the plan. But that, that group of people isn't by themselves and they're not just locking themselves in a room for a day or two and coming up with ideas. They begin with a self-study. They try to ask themselves in the community, what does our district do really well? What are the assets we want to leverage going forward? Are there any areas of improvement? Are there any opportunities and threats coming down in the future, either from our local context or the broader state context? There's a lot of effort to understand the perspectives of the community so that in the process, voices from the community are constantly being asked, their perspective, their opportunities for community to weigh in. And those, those viewpoints are really listened to and they're brought into the substance of the plan. There's an improvement logic that's ultimately kind of surfaced. Here's our best thinking of how to move forward. And that, that logic is made explicit so that they can test it and they can analyze it, they can scrutinize it and make sure that they don't just jump to the net, the kind of newest shiny object they're really thinking about. Is this the best way to move our given district forward? There's often some scenario planning, some thinking about what might happen in the future. And, and then thinking about how those strategies would relate to those. And then, and I can't underscore this enough. This is probably my biggest takeaway of the last 20 years. Many organizations spend huge numbers of hours, a lot of money, a lot of energy coming up with a plan. And I would say that that's not a bad thing unless that's the, the work. I had a colleague a long time ago who gave advice to another colleague who was planning his, his wedding. And my, my older colleague, who was a couple of generations older than both of us, said to, to him, you know, if you would spend a little bit more time planning your, your marriage instead of planning your wedding, you'd probably be really well off. And I thought that was a really brilliant idea. And I think the same way for strategic planning in districts. Let's spend time on the front end, thinking about how we're going to use the strategic plan, not just do it as an event. So because, so thinking about strategy and how to be strategic gets baked into the district. And lastly, and this relates to that previous point, is there's a lot of time thinking carefully about how the strategic plan and its big ideas flow through and, and out of the organization. It, it's not a surprise when the plan is over where all of a sudden the district's saying, wait, what do we do with it now? That's already been thought about in the planning process. And, and so they're ready to hit the ground running. So I'm going to come out of share screen and tell you that we are delighted to, to partner with Region 12, with the prospect of partnering with Region 12. We have huge respect for the success that you've achieved as a, the educational community. We have quite a bit of respect for your superintendent. And the idea of partnering with you as a facilitator and as a guide as you come up with the plan that you want for your community, your, your young people and your future is exciting to us. So I have to answer any questions? And I don't know if the superintendent had any things she wanted to add to that.
Thank you for the presentation, Richard. And we, we've talked a lot about it as a board and as the Long Range Planning Committee. So this is something that as we've explored other options that are out there. And I think as you talked about, the typical versus what is different in this and making certain that it's not just about creating something, but it's about moving the organization and doing this systematically. And that really comes at a strategic level. And that's, you know, where, where we're looking to have that partnership come in. So board members, any questions?
I don't know your protocol. I see that there's a hand up, but I'm, I don't know if the board chair wants to recognize the speakers.
I'm sorry, Kathy, do you have a question?
Yes.
Do you have a question?
Yeah, I do. My name is Kathy Karen. I'm from New Preston. I have, I have a, I just started listening to this discussion. And I wanted to know, have people asked for deliverables already or has that been established?
Do you want to comment on that, Meg?
I'm sorry, if it's okay, I'd like to answer. At this point, that, that is part of the work that we're going to be doing, which is what, what is our goal? What are we looking to have happen? So there are some, some things that we'd like to see. I think we know that the educational excellence and how we're trying to move our curriculum forward, some of those things are non-negotiables. But how we get to that, what that planning looks like and how we're enriching the experiences of our students is definitely part of the, the strategies. We're looking to say, what does the educational system look like pre K through 12?
Okay, I just have one more question. Do, is there a price tag on this, buddy? Hello? Is there a price tag on this? Is there a cost to this established already?
Yes, there is a price tag on this.
And what is it?
It's a $47,000, 47,500.
And what is that per student head?
Say that again? We don't break down every class per student.
No, I mean, how many students do?
I'd, I'd like to ask a question if no one else on the board has one. Richard, you spent the first good part of the presentation and you, you returned to this theme on multiple occasions of telling us that often despite the best intentions of people doing strategic planning, we, we, we get into the process and it all goes for naught. It heads in the wrong direction and it's a waste of time. And we, we do a poor job of it. So I guess the question is, how do you plan on not having it take the traditional path, the typical path toward time wasting?
No, I, I appreciate that question. I think that there are a number of things that we would be doing from the very beginning. One is making sure that that initial group that is the hub of planning represents multiple roles and perspectives and really comes to own everything that's developed. So on the, once you begin to turn the quarter from planning to execution, there are a number of people who deeply own it. Two, make sure that there is a, an intensive process of engaging the community and I include in that educators in that community so that voices are heard and that that can, that can inform the work. And that, that ensures that you don't come up with a plan that seems utterly divorced from the people who are living in the system, who are being served by the system and are trying to implement the strategies. But I, I think that what it also involves is early in the process, working with the district to identify the improvement routines through which strategic plans are going to get used. For example, when during the arc of a typical academic year, will we be asking school leader to examine the strategic plan of the district? Make school level plans and bring those plans to the board and report on results from the previous year? At what time during the year will the board be asking the superintendent to come before the board and, and provide updates on implementation? At what point during the year and what processes will be used where the superintendent engages the educational community to say, and where are we at this? And what we need to get better at? And what have we learned about these strategies? And, and that part is, is critical. And I think it's, it's mapping that out before the strategic plan is complete is essential to making sure the strategic plan gets woven into how you do business as opposed to being this theme that kind of exists outside of the day to day work of an organization.
Well, I, I was going to say, I have, I've served on corporate boards. I've, I've served on this Board of Education. I've been involved with other groups. And it occurs to me that what tends to happen is that if, if you want a strategic, the strategic plans that are written into the way the company does business or the organization does business and that they, they abide by and do, or usually the strategic plan is written by management, put in front of the Board of Directors and approved on a voice vote. And that's the end of it because management's already decided how it's going to operate. And typically it comes up with a plan and, you know, you think you've come up with a plan, but at, at best your, your input is at the margins because that's the way they already plan to operate. I, I find it more of an educational exercise on how the organization, what the organization, what the management of the organization feels their, their operations need to be than a, than a broad, broad ranging thing. Also, when you talk about a large, you know, diverse group of people, we've done this before in strategic planning in this region. It didn't really produce very much in the way of results. I mean, we, we had a broad range of people from all over the place, all over the community. They came up with a plan, they, they, they announced it. We put it out there and it right, went right in the hole shortly after that. I mean, it was a disaster. And so I, I guess I'm, I'm not convinced that, that there's anything to this planning process. I, I don't quite know what it's going to plan. I don't know what it's going to try to set. And I don't know, you know, whether or not we're going to find ourselves in the same position that, that in, in that last, one of the last Harry Potter books where, where Harry, Hermione and Ron, Hermione wants a plan, she's trying to put together a plan. And Harry says, look, we, we plan all the time. We always create a plan. We get there and all hell breaks loose. And I'm just wondering, how do we, you know, I don't know how we avoid that, but I'm not a, I've done enough planning that I'm not, I'm an, I'm a skeptic of whether or not it's a, you've got to do a little bit more to convince me that it's worth the, the time and money. It's worth $47,000.
So I, I deeply, I deeply appreciate everything you just said. And I think I actually come to strategic planning a bit as a skeptic myself. And I, as you've heard me, the majority of time people have done this. That's tended to produce the results organizations want. I think it requires doing it in a new way. So we don't take, when a, when a superintendent asks us to come in, we really think about, is this going to add value? And we're kind of interviewing superintendent somewhat of that, in that process. I would say that the, in terms, we, we've not been a part of a process where we helped an organization develop a plan and it just. became a disaster and sank into a hole, I believe, the description you had. So I I would love to unpack, maybe not at this time, but if if this goes forward, I would, I think it would be essential for us to understand what happened in that past planning process to make sure it didn't happen again. And I, the other piece I would say is that having worked in the corporate space and done some strategic planning there, I I'm not in disagreement with what you've seen happen. I think that in the public space, it's been harder in my in my experience to see superintendents kind of lead entirely in that way. In part because they're they're led by publicly elected board members. In part because they're seen as very public officials with very porous organizational boundaries and where parents are rightly kind of demanding answers and accountability on a regular basis. So I think it is somewhat different concept.
John, I'm sorry, John.
Now, Richard, are you permitted to give us some references or school systems that have benefited from your system?
Absolutely. We would love to put together a list of several districts and their plans and the superintendents of those districts or board members in that district so that you can you can pick and choose of your own volition to to make sure you've got all the insights you need of what it means to to work with us as partners. We we actually would encourage it.
Sounds good.
Just to remind the board, we did have the original proposal that we looked at last year. There are still references on there. I can certainly refresh the board on that as well because I think it is absolutely important that we talk to others what their process has been like, where where they've where they've brought this process to. Because I do think the the statements that Richard has been making, this is not just about what it's like to do the planning, but it's also holding ourselves accountable and pushing ourselves. And I do think that having someone come in and challenge you takes you beyond what would be your typical expectations. I think there's a way that we can look at ourselves and just feel really good about ourselves. But there's a way we can push ourselves to be better for our students. And I welcome the outside partnership. I think when we were talking and Julie, you can certainly jump in on any of this. When we had talked at our long range planning, there's limitations to what we can do as we're looking at our future. There's only certain ways that we're challenging because there may be things that we're not seeing opportunities because we're just exploring the challenges. And to have someone who's going to come at it and really say, well, here's what the forefront of research is. Here's when you should be presenting. Here's when you should be looking at it. Here's where self reflection happens. And are you really meeting that mark? Because I don't want to feel good about us if we are not actually performing to the level that we should. This should not about us having having well funded, underperforming students. We need to make certain that they are meeting their maximum potential. But Julie, certainly you can share.
Yeah, Greg, to your comments, I was part of that process too, which has been almost 10 years ago. We have not had a long range planning process since then. I agree with you that it didn't go well. And one of the reasons that we picked this group is because they are the Cadillac. The references are outstanding. And I think every time you're leading this board, you talk about that we want to be the best in the state. Well, we're not going to be the best in the state if we don't have a long range plan. That's really well done. So I have confidence. I mean, I don't like big price tags on things and I don't want to waste money at all. And I don't think this would be that. I think we've done our due diligence here. We've picked the really best group and I think that we need to do this in order to be that number one.
And just also for the edification of the board, these were funds that were encumbered from last year. So this would not be into this year's budget. It was something that we recognized this was something that the board was looking to do when we were going to have a consultant. So the money has been secured to this. However, it is one that we recognize and we've always been fiscally responsible. This is not about just throwing money. It is the difference that we see. It is about not just investing in a long range plan, is investing with meaning and purpose. It is because we have talked about it at this point. It is one in which, correct me if I'm wrong, we are proposing as a long range planning committee has endorsed this one to look forward. We have already encumbered funds. This is where the proposal is in place. And so, yes, we are looking to move this forward so that way we can get this planning started.
And just one other thought, we have delayed this because of agri science, because of the pandemic. So this is something that's been in the works for a long, long time. This is not something that's just been dropped on the plate here. So, you know, we're prepared for it and we'd like to move forward.
Any other thoughts, any other comments? I'm sorry, Jen.
Here we go. I would just like to share in the same sentiment as Julie. Obviously, being a part of the the long range planning committee 10 years ago, 10 years is a long time. And it really, I think that we can move forward and learn from past mistakes in terms of what worked and what didn't work 10 years ago. But I do think that having an outside source kind of guide us is really important. And I do also agree with Julie that this has been put in the back burner for a long time. It's been a long time coming. And I think that it's nice to be able to move forward with the fresh perspective and and a different and a different consultant to help guide us. But I think that it's important that we as a board support this. And I think that we should be doing this. It's been, like I said, a long time coming and it's long overdue. So I'm prepared to vote tonight.
Okay. Other comments? Alex and then Mary.
We have asked a presentation on the agenda. It was a motion that can come out of the presentation. So it's item D.
Oh, it's not under.
It's not under action because at this point it would be coupled with the presentation. So if the motion coming out of the presentation, if it is one that the board would like to carry forward.
Mary.
On you.
How long does it take for the for the process from start to finish? Julie, do you have an idea of that?
I think it depends on the group and we don't actually have a definitive starting date or ending time. I mean, it's not going to be quick. It's going to take some time to do it for sure, especially with surveys and community engagement and so forth. So I'm not certain of the exact timeframe. I think it took about a year when we did it. It may, it may have been in excess of a year.
Kind of jumping at the bit. So, Richard, in in your typical experience, and I'm going to have you hold your answer for one quick second because I'm going to have Ben turn on the speaker so we can all hear the answer. But in a typical process, what has a timeline been? And we recognize typical is the name of the game, but if we could start to gauge that.
It has, I would say it's ranged from six months to 12 months. And with many being done in a nine month academic year periods, a part of it is at what time during the school year are you trying to launch? And is the summer slow you down or become an accelerant for the work? It's just an issue. And and then issues of how how much community engagement. So and I say that because I have worked with some districts where they have said, we've already done all this community engagement work. We don't, we don't need to do it. Let's create a representative group, but then we don't have to go out much. And then I've worked with other districts where they say it is absolutely essential that we have a big community wide conversation. We can't make all the decisions with 500 people in the room, but we've got to, we've got to start and we've got to have multiple touch point. And that just takes time just to get them calendar. So I I would say if you launched really quickly, it's possible you could get it done by the end of the academic year. It's possible, but that would be, let's really get the calendar, let's let's build the calendar in a way where we can control it and it doesn't control us. And otherwise, it would likely go into the summer and to the beginning of the next academic year.
Lisa.
I'm certainly for this. I'm not sure I'm prepared to vote tonight only because I know we talked about it, but it's it's a hefty price tag and I'd like to review what they had said previously. But I'm certainly for doing this. I think I I just need to review. I don't think I'm ready to vote.
Okay. Anyone else? John, I'm sorry, I see your hand.
I concur with Lisa. We need to know more. I I know that maybe there was a presentation a year or so ago, but I would like to see the list of school systems that have benefited from this work. And also I have one other question for Richard. Do you, does your staff come on site at all to any of the?
Absolutely. It it again, we try to tailor it to exactly what your needs are. We have some districts that are wanting to work kind of remotely and from a distance. And there are some advantages occasionally to to be able to convene people for a two hour meeting in the evening. But we are prepared to be there with you on site as a part of the planning process.
Okay. Mary.
I just had another question for Julie. Did you also talk to other groups that would do this process besides this one?
We reviewed three proposals and one of them was the same group that we had used previously. We didn't meet with any of the other two. But we did carefully review them and this was the one we felt was the best for what we wanted to do. But I totally agree if there's people who are hesitant to vote tonight, I don't think there's any issue at all with waiting until the next meeting and putting the proposals back out there.
Okay, Jen.
I'm okay with postponing as well, but only till the next meeting. I think we've pushed this too far. And I think for those of us who haven't done our due diligence, myself included, I mean, doing a little bit, it's, we've been putting this off for far too long. I think it's time for the board to collectively get ourselves up to speed and make a decision because.
If if we're, if we're gonna postpone it, meaning is it possible that all of the information we're looking for can be mobile? Not three days before the next meeting, but with, but within two days from today. Any reason that information can be available immediately? I'd like to pull that chain study and be rare on this.
Can, can certainly do that. Can I just ask at this point, I'm, I appreciate your time and you coming out. Any questions? I think that I'd like to have your questions answered by Richard. So that will be next board meeting, our internal discussion and review of documents versus having to.
Yeah, I do have a question for Richard. Richard, when we we get into this, the the first question I always have about a strategic plan is why are you doing a strategic plan? What are you hoping to accomplish? Where are you, where are you looking? Where are you going? How is that decision made? Is that made by a a group of inside people or is that made? Obviously, you have to get to that before you can start the process.
What I, what I regularly do to that end is once we're in agreement that we're moving forward, I usually come to the board and I I first ask the board, what are you hoping to accomplish? What would success look like? And try to get clear, what are some of the guiding parameters? Because at the end of the day, it'll be the board that will ultimately sanction the strategic planner. So it's important from my vantage point that I understand exactly what the boards want, what are the parameters? What what are the values about the process that you want to build? And I make sure that there's strangulation with the superintendent, the cabinet and the board. And before we ever launch the first meeting with the committee. And then that very first meeting with the committee is to try to get them clear on what the parameters are that have been given to us, that they charge, if you will, from the board. And and also clarify what they want out of the experience within those parameters. So I I I'm in agreement there. I I think it's important to begin with the end in mind and get the end clarified. Otherwise, you could spend vast amounts of energy thinking that you're doing good work, but not moving towards the target.
Richard, let me ask you a question about that. Is this, is this like, this is this process of you're sitting with the board? Is this something that's going to take a couple hours? Is that the idea? This is not something that's quick. It's something that takes a little bit of time and a little bit of give and take and back and forth. Do I have, am I reading that correctly?
Absolutely. It would be, we would put it on 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 your calendar at some point that you think is appropriate, whether it's a workshop or in a regular meeting. And I would, I would have some questions for the whole group. And in many ways, I would be listening in to the board have a conver, having a conversation about some big questions about the strategic plan, trying to take careful notes and trying to make sure that I can feedback exactly what I heard you saying. What were the themes and patterns? Where was it, where were those areas of convergence? And where was there divergence? And that's not a 15 minute conversation. But I don't think it needs to be a day long retreat either. I think it could be done in a couple hours evening meeting.
So if we, so if we did an evening retreat, what we call a retreat dedicated to it, where we where we really put in the time to 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 get that part right, then I think this could be a very worthwhile enterprise. Does anybody have feeling on that as to whether that's the right approach? I mean, we just had a very productive retreat meeting and it was maybe a two, three hour meeting in the evening. And this sounds like that's a good, would be a good start for us. Did Julie, does that work with you?
Yeah, I think that's absolutely what we would plan to do and that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah, I think that could maybe get us off on a productive path because it's not, I'm a skeptic of these things, but not, not because I want to do it. And you've, you've made a very good case for why it's important. I just want to make sure that we don't make the same mistake we made last time, which is going into it with maybe the a a lack of a shared idea of what the outcome ought to be or what we were trying to accomplish. And that's why I think taking it offline of these meetings and getting it out of the meeting and into a a little bit more productive space where we're just there for that. It might make this thing do go well. So I'm, I'm, it sounds like people are appreciate that that approach and want to go there. Pete. That's the idea. The idea is to come out of this with a strategic plan so we have a broad map in moving forward as to as to where we're going to go. Not every decision is that strategic plan going to cover, but it's going to give us direction. It's gonna, when we, when we try to decide whether we want to do A or B, we do it in the context of how does this advance the plan that we've all agreed upon? And that's sort of the way these things are supposed to work. And if it's going to be organic, if it's going to come out of this group and whatever brought, however, we broaden this group, then it has to, that's where it has to start. I mean, it has to start with an idea of what we want to accomplish. No, we get there and all hell breaks loose. We don't have a strategic plan. And it's not necessarily a bad thing that we don't have it. But the question is, if we want to accomplish that, which we've laid out and which I know I've spent great length laying out for this school district, we might be helped along if we could bring everybody into the conversation about how we get there so that we have a plan for getting there and it's not just ad hoc. And we haven't for a while. We had such a bad experience last time that I think we weren't, we weren't excited to go forward with a new, a new plan, a new strategy. Plus, a lot of things have occurred. We had ag science in there and, you know, it's hard to believe that we started having that conversation in 2015. And that is set in essence, six years ago, became our strategic plan. That was our strategic plan, which was how do we implement agri science? And how do we bring other people into the district? We knew that the district was getting too small and we saw that as an opportunity to enrich the program, to have a really good program that was in sync with the three towns, but also solve some of our demographic problems. And it has, it's largely worked. It's done very well, but that became the strategic plan. Well, now we've got that up and running. The question is, how do we take it somewhere? How do we fit it into the larger plan? And those are the kind of things this is about. But I I don't want to kid you. But I don't want to kid you. It's going to take an investment of your time. And I know we ask a lot of people, but it's going to take an investment of time because last time it took an inordinate amount of time. Maybe this time we can, we can spend more quality time. But I think, but it's going to take some time. We're going to have to have several. You're gonna, there're gonna be a lot of these meetings. And and so, you know, I don't want people to go into this thinking, oh, this is just something we're going to knock off like whether or not the minutes stay on the, in the consent agenda. I mean, this is going to be work. Pete.
No, our last plan ended in 2017. So we did a plan from 2012 to 2017. So didn't even articulate the agri science that we have here. Quite frankly, we want to make certain that we're designing an education program to be successful, not that we're just lucky. And so to turn around and say, we need to be forward thinking, what does that plan look like? Right now, we don't have a plan. Right now, we have a goal for student achievement. We have a goal for increasing enrollment. But what does that look as like as a cohesive plan is something in which we absolutely need to button up and to make certain everyone knows that every member of this organization knows what we stand for and where we're going. It is my job, Pete, absolutely. It's my job to do that. But it is about, you know, that question that you always ask me, which is how are you getting stakeholders? How, what do the people want? The three towns want something different. But do we actually know? This is actually organizing everyone and having those conversations and finding out how do we make this education system reflect its community? So all those things you're asking for, which are part of my job to execute on that, to gather that, to then formulate, to come up with a plan and design it. Getting someone outside to help us do that is only going to drive us further and make us better as an organization.
But yeah, but Pete, remember, it's a strategic plan, not a tactical plan. And and the tactics is where it frequently breaks down or doesn't break down. But but strategic tells you, where do you see yourself in two years, five years, 10 years? What direction are you heading in? What are the, what are the markers you have to meet in order to get to where you're going? And that's really what the strategic plan is. Now, along the way, something can intrude that creates an issue and that makes you want to reassess and rethink. But you know, you can't, you can't plan on that. That's just what happens.
I just wanted to point out too that this group has worked with some of the very top schools in the state. And so we're benefiting from their knowledge of what other schools are doing outside of what we think is going on here in our district. So I think there's a huge benefit to hiring a group that really knows what they're doing and has worked with the very best, the very brightest. And I think it's worth the investment. I hope we all agree.
Yeah, Mary.
I just have a question for you, Greg. Where did we go wrong the last time?
Well, dude, that's a long discussion. I don't know. Let's save that for another time. Otherwise, it'll fill the agenda tonight. But look, we, a lot of people made mistakes, I among them, in in the approach to that whole thing. And I think that what we want to do this time, this time the stakes are, this time the stakes are higher. You know, we have a chance here. We have a chance to do something that's really unheard of in public education. And I don't want to blow it. I really want to do it right. I really want to get us to that area we want to do it. And if we can work with a firm that's that's worked with the best, that's all the better for us because I think we're in that class. But we maybe need to do a few things to really cement us in that class. And I think that's the idea of what this process would be. And let me tell you, it's going to be work, but on the other hand, think about what you're going to accomplish. If you can turn this little school district into the place that everybody in the state wants to send their kids because we do everything well. And I think if we can find a way to get there, if we can, and look, we've, we've made a lot of good strides in this school system. The fact that one of our elementary schools is determined by US News, you know, to be the or whatever the organization is, to be the best elementary school in the state of Connecticut. That's not easy. And what I'd like us to be is the school that has so many resources available to our kids that there's no question, this is where you want to be. And we're headed in that direction. But the question is, how do we get there a cohesive way? And how do we make decisions along the way where we we stick to that plan and we accomplish it? That's really the goal. Jen.
I also just want to, just, I'm thinking a little bit about Pete's comment about, isn't that supposed to be Megan's job? Is that what you write, Pete, when I said that? I don't think it's fair that the board would put her in that position to let it be her job to collectively decide what the communities want, which is why it's really important that we as a board hear what people have to say. Whether or not we agree, I think it's important that the community at large feels heard. And I think that for us to put that responsibility on our superintendent's shoulders is a very unfair place for her to be.
Okay, Pete.
But when it comes to a very large price tag, I think that collectively, and I know you've heard it all before, Pete, but that doesn't mean that people who haven't been able to share before don't deserve to still be heard. So the people that shared 20 years ago are not the same people that are sharing today. And it is our job as board members to listen.
Okay. Other comments? Is there consensus that we want to gather this additional information that's going to be distributed and then make a decision our next meeting? Is anyone disagree with that? And can we get that information out quickly so people have a chance to really look at it? And and the excuse isn't, well, I was busy this weekend and I didn't have a chance before the meeting.
I can get it out of the board minutes from the long range planning and got all of that information documented. So it's as easy as anything.
Richard, do you have any suggestions of things we might want to think about, consider, do, talk at this point?
No, I appreciate the conversation. I think not just running into something. Given what you, what you described you experienced in the past, I think a little bit of caution is part of your due diligence and asking these questions. And I, I would double down on the, let's get it right from the beginning. If you decide you're moving forward, taking time at the very beginning of the process to get everyone kind of, not just on record, but of the same mind of what are we trying to pull out? What's the why behind this plan? What are we, what are we imagining the plan will produce? What are we imagining the process for producing the plan will produce, which could be its own thing? I think that's really essential and not just running toward the set of activities divorced from the outcomes you're trying to produce. So I encourage you to keep having this conversation and and we will be ready to roll up our sleeves in partnership with you when you're ready.
I think we're going to be ready fast. That's my inclination or at least my thinking. Richard, thank you very much. Does anyone have any additional questions for Richard? Because now's the time to ask them if you do. Thank you very much. We appreciate your, your presentation.
You're welcome. And thank you. I appreciate the audience. Have a lovely evening.
Okay, we will. All right, let's move on to the updates on COVID-19 and vaccinations.
Okay, that is me and I'm going to just share my screen as we do with all of our updates with COVID. I want to make certain that you know COVID by the numbers and what we have happening. We had seen some really good weeks in region 12 with no reports of any COVID and we've had a couple here and there, but I can also say that we have not had to quarantine anyone for a close contact within the last time period between the last presentation. So again, that's where we get to applaud our community, applaud the way the school environments are set up because we are safely operational. So really, when you can see our numbers, we are in the single digits. But it is where you could see that at Chippag Valley is where we've had the uptick. And when I say uptick, we just had the two additional cases that happened at the school. And so it's just some updates that we have happening and things that are very important for our board to know. So the FDA did approve Pfizer vaccines for children ages five to 11. We're currently working with the New Milford Health Department in order to set up clinics. We have shared that information. So any parent who does want to pre-register their child for a clinic opportunity can do such. The clinics are going to run very different than if anybody who had gone on for any area, even though working those clinics. That's we've been talking in terms of drive ups for five to 11 year olds. So they go up to the car and do shots. So that way, no one's watching anyone else get their vaccination, that we're not creating any panic. You know, there's, they're trying very hard to make it a fun and festive atmosphere for the students. And so one of the things that we also want to say is that it is important to know that they are making these clinics specifically to ages five to 11. So this is not where the family can all go and get vaccinated together. The reason that it is such is because the dosing is different for children five to 11. So in order to promote safety and make certain that there, that everything is going well with the administration, there are no confusion, nothing can go wrong. There are specific clinic dates that have been given to us. Any family who has questions, anything that if there's any concerns that they have, just any information that they may have been given that makes them give pause to getting the vaccine. I'd say certainly work with your pediatricians. We are not in, in the business of giving medical advice and I'm not about to start doing that now. So wanting to make certain, and in our conversation with our medical advisor, they have shared that our local pediatricians are working to secure some of the vaccines. So they can also do the dosing right within their, within their offices. So that way they can spend a little more time with some of the people who want to have more questions answered. So please know that that's also happening. And also to let people know that we continue to have people mask up when they are entering our buildings and interacting with our students. So we know that that's still in effect until February 2022. So it is one I have to say. I say this as a reminder, but I have, I can tell you our community, people who have come into to the school, our students have been so respectful. You really see they, they are masking up. If, you know, they were alone and eating and you walk by, they'll quickly put their masks up. So it is one that I can say the community takes the threat seriously, even though we know we are seeing more and more people be vaccinated. They're still taking the efforts to keep everyone safe. So that is my COVID update and I will open up if there are any questions regarding COVID or our strategies for mitigations.
From what I gather from going to the site, the site that the, that clinic for the five to 11 group is on, on a Tuesday and it will still be at the Pettibone Building? That's I just want to make sure.
Yep, they are opening up. I believe we sent out, it was Tuesday and Saturday clinics that they will be opening up. We know that that's going to start after November 4th because I think it has to go through one other clearance before that that becomes the opportunity. But this is where right now they're taking the preregistrations for it. So excellent question.
But apparently I'm getting periodically getting muted. So all right, first item is my report and I, because we've kind of gotten long on the agenda, I don't really want to. I don't want to spend a lot of time talking, but I will relay just a a wonderful experience that I had over the last few days. I, I had a conference, a legal conference out in, in, in Tennessee. And after that, I went to visit my youngest daughter in Minneapolis and I was had a, you know, a grand time there. But one of the interesting things I saw is that in a lot of neighborhoods there, on a lot of blocks, there are little, there are little boxes, no bigger than say this, that have glass doors on them and they're filled with books. And it is a private lending library. People are, if they have one in front of their house, they they tend to it and they make sure that there's a a wide variety of books available to people and people borrow them and they leave them. And some of them actually have food, some of them are larger and have food in them for people that are, that are in need of food. The community spirit reminds me very much of this little town, the little towns that we live in. And I think that that's just a marvelous thing to see in a city. And the twin cities are each 400,000 people. So those are, that's a fairly large collection of people and they are dedicated to public spiritedness and to literacy in a way that I just had not seen before in that kind of environment. And I think that's a wonderful thing. And I think we should be, you know, we should be heartened by that, that these things happen, that they're out there, that our other fellow citizens are doing marvelous things in that direction. And wouldn't it be nice? We can't really do it here because people drive here. They don't walk. So it doesn't kind of work. But there are things like that that we should keep an eye on and do. I thought that was just a wonderful, a wonderful thing that I had a chance to see while I was there. And so with, with that, and just my, my, my feelings that maybe this, this COVID thing has turned a little bit of a corner. I hope it's not another corner into the, into a back alley like we got last time. But hopefully this will, this will get us into a better situation because I cannot stand these masks at these meetings. Okay, that's, that's all I had to say. John? Wherever you are, there you are.
Yeah, good evening. Just two things. Tomorrow is not only election day, November 2nd, but we will also be conducting our ban sale. The ban total amount was originally projected to be 7 million, but that was reduced by 500,000 to 6.5 million. Because the 3 million that was projected for the projects, the three projects that Chippag came in less than what was originally budgeted for. So we were able to, to do with 2.5 million on those projects. And that includes the windows actually. And the sale is being conducted by Barry Bernabetti from Phoenix Advisors. And Matt Ritter is our, the speaker of the Connecticut House of Representatives is our bond and ban counsel on the sale. So hope for, hope and pray for a favorable rate. It's only a nine month ban, which will come to term in August. It does include 4 million that hopefully sometime in the future, we will be getting a reimbursement from the state for the ag construction. Or total, the final payment of our, from the state share. And this week, Nicole has informed me that our regional audit, financial audit is being conducted by Charles Heaven. And they're going to be around for the entire week. If anybody wants to get on and help. That's about it.
All right. Well, thank you. My, my update is really hopefully sunshine and roses is what everybody can see because we have a lot to celebrate. So there are so many positive things. there are so many positive things happening, but I need to start with that huge congratulations to Booth Free Elementary School, who is recognized by the US News and World Report as a top school in Connecticut. So I do want to let everyone know Burnham was not ranked, not because of its excellence falling shy, but because the enrollment was too low to be statistically relevant in in the rating. But we had Washington Primary who ranked number 14 out of the 848 schools that were ranked. And Booth Free took the number one spot in Connecticut. And I think that that really a testament across the board of our staff and the support you have given this staff. And I hope everyone feels that huge gust of pride that is so well deserved. We will be getting Representative Cindy Harrison is putting together a citation for the school staff and community. And we will do a celebration within Roxbury because I think that is a nice feather in a cap that we're going to go loud and proud on. I can share with you that Chippewa Valley School was able to host its homecoming dance on October 16th. The dance was exclusively held for Chippewa students with the intention of holding an outdoor dance. Mother Nature had other plans. And this is again where our students just looked at us, threw on their masks and went inside and danced and had a great time. So things that we thought would just be devastating and very upsetting. They really just it was about being together and having that experience. And so I want to say a special thank you to our senior class advisors, Taylor Pierce and Stephanie Shook, as well as our class officers who made those necessary arrangements. Have a wonderful evening. Our agri science students have returned safely from their Indianapolis trip this weekend. I can tell you thank you to the board. There is a renewed energy and those eight students who went off and came back and are just they are gushing with what it means, what where agriculture is going, what they can do. There is a new passion and I think that is really something that COVID has stolen from our kids in in our agri science program is some of that passion. So to see it coming through. They've actually asked if they can do a presentation to the board. They are that excited about what happened and I'm going to say we said yes. So you'll see them on the 15th as well. We don't usually get a lot who like, oh, can we can we do this? So if that says where their passions have have come from. We did have Halloween celebrations that reflected our communities. Washington Primary did a trick or treat trails over the weekend and a movie showing Booth Free students wore pajamas to school. So the tradition of surprising each other with the costumes during the trick or treat could remain intact. And the Bridgewater students at Burnham went through their parade through town and were able to show off their costumes and whereas Shapag, our students did wear some of their costumes to school. It was really kicked off by the staff's competition of who could outdo each other in their their group costumes for departments. So a lot of fun and we love seeing that energy come back into the school. So very, very happy. I do want to let everybody know, and I know that that we talked about the TikTok challenges and our concerns about those. As we close out October, I want to let you know, not one of our students crossed the line, not one of our students fell into the lore of social media. All of our students conducted themselves the way that we know region 12 students would. So I just wanted to make certain you knew that I know that that was a looming threat. And our students did not falter. So I hope anyone who is interested in joining on Saturday, November 13th, our Agri Science Academy will be holding its open house from 11 to 1 o'clock for prospective students, but we certainly welcome board members to come see our showcase of what we are offering. And also just a quick reminder, there is no school for our students tomorrow on Election Day, but our staff will be participating in professional development. And quickly, before I go into personnel, are there any questions about my update? That's good. You guys should not question happiness. So as far as we have a number of appointments, we'd like to welcome Elizabeth Akerman, who is the literacy tutor at Washington Primary School. That is a grant funded position from our Esther Dollars. So that really is to help fill in some of the gaps that we know that distance learning has created. Gabriella Nella will also be a grant funded literacy tutor working at the Burnham School. We welcome Roman Buena Ventura, who is our new custodian at Chippewa Valley School and just so much energy. We are very excited to have him join us. We welcome Christina Gorbeky back. She had left the school district for a little while is now back to us and will be the literacy tutor at Washington Primary School. Welcome to our alumni, Sydney Oakenquest, who will be building substitute at Booth Free and Burnham Schools. And if you look over to the edge of the table, I need to give a welcome to Danielle Cuneda, who is going to be our new board recording secretary. And we are very excited and we're very happy that your children will release you on Mondays to come help us out. And not only she willing to take minutes for us, she's also one of our cheerleaders as she is a parent in our school. So we welcome you to to the board. We have some people who are leaving our district. So Nancy Barron, who is then our Secretary to the Director of Finance at Central Office. She will be retiring effective February 1st. For those who do not know Nancy, she has been in our school district for about 37 years. She has done it all. She has seen it all. She has laughed through it all. We will miss her very much, but I also know that this is her new journey and we wish her well. Sue Haverly, who has done a phenomenal job as our board recording secretary, we cannot beat the cuteness of her grandchild. So we're going to give her back her Monday nights. She will still be working with our agri science and curriculum departments. So please know this is not a goodbye to us. And we certainly know we're going to lean on her for consulting when we are taking the minutes and notes of those board meetings. But I think we all can say, Sue, you've done an exceptional job and we will be celebrating Sue at our next board meeting. Harold Larson is custodian at Chippewa Valley School. He's retiring. He effective on Friday. And for those who don't know, Harry, Harry has opened the door at 5:30 in the morning. He is welcome swimmers. He has really made certain that all lights are on and everything is ready and pristine for our students and we will certainly miss him, but we wish him well in his retirement. And not too many people know her as Elizabeth McQueen. Most of you know Lisa McQueen, who is our school nurse at Burnham School. Lisa has is resigning. She has taken another position that really is kind of her dream job. She has been our dream nurse and we will miss her deeply, but we know we wish her well. She has asked that she can stay in our sub list and we said yes. But it is one that she is very near and dear and we wish her well. We also have some leaves of absences. We have Steve Crowley, the head custodian at Washington Primary. Sheila Gambino, our technology teacher at Chippewa and Nancy Meyer, the head custodian at Burnham School. And at that time, that concludes my personnel report. Marathon. We've been busy.
We have nothing to report right now. Our next meeting is going to be November 15th at 5:30.
Okay. Joe, advance.
I've attended my first advanced meeting on October 7th, which was a board of directors meeting. At this meeting, they presented the agency's direction and their financial position. Due to the pandemic, they had to make drastic adjustments, but all in all, they received a bunch of grants which had brought them back into their better financial position. We also approved the final budget for the 21, 22 season or year. And there were a lot of positive remarks with that. October 27th, I had a one-on-one meeting with Jeff Kitching as he welcomed me as a new board member. And the next meeting is on November 4th, which is a Zoom meeting, which has quite a bit on the agenda. I do believe that there is something about our dues or the region, the school district dues. I don't know if it's just any adjustments, but I saw a quick overview of it. And that's all I have for now.
Thank you, Joe. That's a pretty, pretty busy report. Lot going on there. Keep us posted. Finance and operations, Alex, and and this is what we refer to as the F and O committee. So if you hear F and O, finance and operations.
Yes, the F and O committee has not met since our last board meeting. So the only thing that needs to be really updated is that the presentation that was given on solar, it turns out it really won't work for us. So we're not going to be going solar at Washington Primary. The numbers just didn't work out. So other than that, nothing new has happened since the last meeting.
Okay, thank you. Labor negotiations, I'll give that report. As you know, we finished our negotiations with the custody, the union representing our custodians. We have, I believe, come to a conclusion in our negotiations with our non-certified staff and par professionals. That that will be coming to you shortly. Right now I believe it's out for ratification by the union and should they ratify it? Then we'll be bringing it to you for your your action there. We're about to commence negotiations with the administrator, the union representing our administrators. That's that's the next one. So this is the busy year with with three of these union negotiations in short succession. So that's where we are and we'll keep you posted. Julie, strategic long range planning, do you have anything to add to the agenda that you have set tonight?
Okay. Yes, we did have a meeting tonight at six o'clock right prior to this meeting and I'll just cover a couple of highlights. One is the tuition policy, which is under action items. But we are going to be modifying that to suggest there be an increase in our middle school tuition from 6,000 to 6,500 per year. So in addition to the change, the mild change with the high school students. We are very excited about getting our long range planning process underway. So hopefully at the next meeting, we'll move forward with that. And on the PTO liaisons, we understand that Greg, you will be making assignments for each of the three schools. So we'll wait to hear from you on that. And those are basically the highlights.
Okay. That sounds good. Thank you very much. Well, so we'll move on to new business. Elementary computer science.
I was gonna say, and if it's okay, Greg, I'd like to introduce Betsy Minn. Betsy is absolute guru when it comes to computer science and has managed to make this digestible for as young as kindergarteners. So Betsy comes to our students, she is working directly with them every Friday. We've recognized that so many enrichment opportunities were taken from our students because of COVID. And so to introduce the opportunity for our students to learn about computers, computer programming, robotics, and do it in a way that is not just fun, but get some thinking in terms of problem solving, gets their mathematical minds moving. I think this is a credit to her skill set and what she's able to offer. So Betsy, if you want to showcase your work with our children, we are happy to hear.
All right. So as Megan said, my name is Betsy Minn and I'm consulting with Region 12 to help develop the elementary curriculum for computer science, both working with teachers and working in the classroom with students. So elementary computer science matters because the Bureau of Labor and Statistics predicts that jobs are going to increase by about 3% by 2029. However, those tech jobs are going to increase by 11%. But if we take those technology jobs and we break out the four job types that involve either coursework in computer science or a degree in computer science, those professions are predicted to grow by 16%. Right now, we don't actually have enough qualified candidates to fill current jobs available today, let alone the predicted increase. So we really as a as a nation or as a community, need to get our kids interested in STEM and computer science. So our workforce is actually pretty evenly split 50/50, but only 12% of computer science jobs are held by women. So one of the ways that we can get our workforce ready for these computer science jobs is to increase not only just the number of kids interested in computer science, but specifically target our girls. So one of the issues that we have is that only about 2% of people actually understand what computer science is. So it's really hard to get excited about computer science and a job in computer science if you don't actually understand what computer science is. Most kids have to wait till high school till they're allowed to take a formal computer science course. And what we know is that kids tend to flock to subjects that they are exposed to. So if you don't know what computer science is, you're very unlikely to pursue a career or even an education in it. So a lot of people, when they think of computer science, think about coding or programming. Some of this is due to people using the word coding all like interchangeably with computer science. So programming is a big part of computer science, but it's not the whole picture. So computers were actually, you know, originally set up to do data and analytics. So the collection, storage, manipulation of data is still a big part. That field actually continues to grow. The more connected our computer we become, the more powerful our computers become, the more data we have, those jobs are high in demand. There's also things like the computing systems, the devices, the software troubleshooting. That falls under the umbrella, as does things like networks and cybersecurity. And then something we sort of already teach in school to sort of the impacts of computing. So think about like our digital citizenship classes and stuff we teach to our kids. The ethics around computing, privacy, plagiarism, creative commons, if any of you have heard of creative commons, all those things actually fall under the realm of computer science. So we have this issue where the STEM careers, there's this what they call the leaky pipeline. And there's all sorts of reasons that this occurs, but they lose, kids lose interest. We have a lot of little kids that are excited about robots. They're excited about computers. And somewhere along the way, they lose interest. One of the things that research says is that positive informal experiences in elementary school are a really high predictor of whether kids are going to pursue computer science. So providing these informal positive experiences for our kids in elementary school is really going to help them, not only with their careers and stuff, but also just with their interest in knowledge in general. So a lot of times these early experiences either center around robotics or video game development. And what we know about those two things is the kids who are going to go into computer science. This is going to interest them. The kids that are not, this is not going to interest them. So we have to think of things that are engaging for them that will drive them in. So one of the things that we're going to do, instead of focusing on the product or the projects, is think about the process. So computational thinking is at the heart of computer science. So computational thinking is understanding how computers work, how to create and formulate problems, and then designing programs that computers can execute. And the most effective way to teach computational thinking is by teaching computer science because they're intrinsically connected. Computational thinking is basically a problem solving process and it's a process that starts before any code is written. So despite what the name implies, computational thinking is actually a human ability. So humans can process information, humans can compute, which is basically if you've heard of unplugged computer science, that's the justification behind those kind of things. It also helps you think about the fact that not only does computer science fit in with math and science and engineering, but we could also integrate computer science into things like the humanities or the arts. One of the things we struggle with is finding time for all these things. So what I'm going to sort of demonstrate for you tonight is how easily computer science can fit into subjects and especially math. So I'm going to switch over here. You guys can still see this, yes? Good. Oh, I can see it up there. That's exciting. Okay, so Scratch is one of the visual computer programming that our students have access to. We use this in third grade and above, but there's a Scratch junior that is also used with our younger elementary school students. Scratch utilizes Scratch utilizes a, what's called a coordinate grid. Um, so you can see like the X Y coordinate. So one way we might use this is, for example, I have this program here. I have this apple and I want this apple to go back to the top of the screen when it reaches the bottom. Well, in order to do that, I have to not only know that X is this way and Y is that way, but I have to use an inequality. So how many of you have used an inequality at any point in your life recently? Right? Okay. We use them all the time in computer science. We learn these things in like second grade, right? And we use them over and over and over again in math and the whole time you're going, why am I learning this? Well, when you teach programming to kids, right away, inequality is a concept that they're going to have to understand or they're not going to be able to make video games, right? So if I click on this apple, when it gets to that part of the screen, it'll jump back up to the top. Another good example, um, Google, when you have the, uh, your internet out, you have the little dinosaur jump game. So this is another example, the rock when it gets to the edge of the screen is going to go across, disappear. So if you'll notice too, there's negative numbers there. Negative numbers are not something we typically teach till middle or high school. Fourth, third, fourth, fifth graders, they can handle negative numbers when you put something like this because there's an immediate feedback. They put in a positive number, it goes the wrong way. They know they need to put their negative in. Another example I have, we talked about video games, but what about our kids who are not into video games? There's this, an example of art, so I can click my little bug here and he draws my shape. So right here, I've got this division sign, so I'm using division. I know that a circle is 360 degrees, then I can take that knowledge, that bug makes a complete circle. So if I want to draw, say, a hexagon, I know hexagons have six corners. I know hexagons have six sides. I can come over here and I can draw a different shape. So I'm using my knowledge of geometry. I'm using my knowledge of division. I'm using my knowledge of degrees and angles to draw different shapes and interesting art. And I can even do really cool things like this. And then I can take that, I can rotate the number of shapes. And I can make even more interesting artwork. So our kids that are really into, you know, art and stuff can get into some really, really cool things. We can put these things onto those vinyl cutter machines with the pencils. There's embroidery software that can do things with this. It's all kinds of really interesting things. That can come out of this. And I even said that there is, um, English language arts. So you can do things like Mad Libs. You know, you can enter your nouns, all these things. The kids, when they're done, will have this lovely video game. Let's see here, somebody give me a noun. What? Chair. Alright, how about a verb? Okay, and another noun? Pair, I like that. Alright, and a plural noun? Look at you with your grammar. And another adjective. Okay, alright, so. I don't know if I sound a little bit. So it's going to take those things, it's going to plug them in and, you know, the kids can do something fun with their grammar lesson as opposed to just doing worksheets and examples. So there's lots of really cool kind, kind of fun ways we can incorporate coding into the elementary part in computer science. But what I really want you guys to take away is not only the importance of this, but all those math things that you just thought you'd never really used and just how like all this math that we did. And I don't know if you noticed in this dinosaur game, this dinosaur is, I was actually, was I at Booth recently? And we were talking about something being too big. And I said, well, it needs to be like twice that size. And one of the kids said, so like 50%? And I was like, yeah, like, like 50%. So we have this sort of like ability to take these cool math concepts that we don't ever use in real life and put them, really apply them. And these are free programs. Um, and, and we have B-Box that the kids have access to. The kids are using code.org at the elementary level. We've got Lego robotics kits and stuff. So we're hoping as the year progresses and this program develops, we'll have more and more of these opportunities for kids to do stuff like this and, and get really interested in this kind of thing. Do you have any questions? For me?
How are our students doing with this?
In a former life, I taught, uh, code.org to fourth and fifth graders and, uh, it's amazing to see, see them when, when they, when they get it. And, uh, you were mentioning that the fact that not enough, uh, girls are, are getting involved in it. My experience was just the opposite. The best, the best students were always the girls. And, and, and they, they really got it. And, uh, I had to tell them, I said, you know, you stick with this. When you come out of college, there's going to be a job waiting for you about any place in the country you want to go. And, and a good paying job.
So what we know happens to girls that was in middle school, the negative stereotypes. There's actually something like a typical, like where if I think the cool kid thinks computer science is nerdy, like I'm going to maybe shy away from it. So not just that movies show it as this isolated nerdy thing, which they're doing less of, thank goodness. But one of the best things that happened to me at my old school was that the head cheerleader became the, one of the high school mentors for my middle school coding club. And this was the homecoming for me. And so her coming down and talking to my girls was like, I mean, it was unbelievable, but like if we don't, uh, but, but as I said, if we have these informal experiences that are positive, so your fourth and fifth grade girls had that positive experience. Even if they get out of it in middle or high school because they think it's nerdy, they are more likely to go back to it in college. And, um, as you said, the girls, there are, there's a lot of girls, they're very good at this. It's not a gendered, but there is a thing in college where because the girls haven't had as much experience as the guys, what happens is they think they're not as able. And it's really like an experience gap, not an actual ability gap. And it's sort of this self-fulfilling. So getting these early experiences is really, really important. Megan, you have a question?
Yeah, I was gonna say, can you talk about how our students are doing with this?
Yeah, so I'm already getting, I was at a school the other day and I wasn't supposed to be there and they're like, you're coming to see us. And I was like, no, I'm sorry, I'm not. So, so far we've done, um, just an intro sort of experience for Scratch. So the kindergarten all the way through fifth grade, did like an exploration day. So one of the things we know is important is for kids to have just not, so code.org is great, but it's a very regimented thing. So giving kids like opportunities to explore and, and do stuff on their own is important. They all did a lesson with BeBot, which is a robot that you program off the screen. And they have to really, what I love about, um, debugging programming, which is like finding your mistakes is you're really finding your mistakes in your own thinking. And so they have to program the robot to go through, like from point A to point B. So the kindergartners, the BeBots great because you can put one command in a time, put it back at the beginning, put in the next command, have it go, next command, put it back, have it go. The second graders worked with, um, arrow cards. So they kind of wrote out their program. And the third through fifth graders, we challenged them to like actually write out their program with arrows. And then I did it with the teachers at the professional development and I had them do something different and they were all thinking about BeBots. And it was great to see they'd even applied some of the skills we've learned. And then right now, the kids are working on an All About Me collage. So they're, um, programming like an interactive poster basically, um, about them and the things they're interested in. So yeah, no, it's, it's going great.
Okay, anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, John.
Yeah, uh, very interesting. Uh, it's also in my mind, a good alternative to, uh, the, the students on video games, you know, spending all their time on video games. It's very beneficial. If we can get them away from that.
Anyone else? Yes, Kansas.
Oh, sorry. Um, I don't have a question, just a comment that I have two students at WPS and they've definitely come home and had, had lots of good things to say about what they're doing at school and they're really excited and learning a lot. So I just want you to know.
Okay. I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Betsy.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to the next item on new business and updates, which is Reach and, uh, SVP updates. Hallie?
I'm unmuted? Perfect. Okay. Um, so I was asked to speak tonight, uh, about Reach and Chappagh Valley Partnership. The good news is we are up and running. Full steam ahead, uh, unlike last year where we only, uh, had one Reach classroom. This year we have three classrooms that are running, uh, 38 students, uh, total. 20 of the students are staying, uh, for the extended day program. And 23 of them will be kindergartners next year. So, um, we seem to be sort of a high population of that, that group that would be going off into kindergarten next year. But that's great. Last year we ran one classroom of 10 students. So everybody that wants, uh, Reach program has it available to them right now. SVP, uh, the partnership, uh, we ran a program last year, but we found it very hard to get everybody out to work. It was hard, uh, to get, uh, businesses to welcome us in right away last year, but right now all of our students are, are at work. Uh, one of our students graduated, uh, turned 22 recently. And so he had a, a little graduation party and we have one graduate that will be turning 22 in a week. So we will be saying goodbye to a second, um, SVP student this year. Uh, we'll have two students remaining this year with some students, um, that are coming towards the end of their career here at Chappagh Valley School that will be joining us at SVP in the future. So everything's a little, even though we're running full steam ahead, things look a little different at Reach. So I thought I'd show you some pictures. We definitely have some new ways of working together. You'll notice in some of the pictures that I show, you'll see the little markings on the floor to keep students making sure they're keeping their space. Uh, you'll see our little ones with their masks, but still trying to engage with each other. Our science, uh, studies, you'll notice again, our students now have desks in the preschool, which is something we didn't have in the past, but the students have really started, started to enjoy having their own little spaces to put their things. Um, but you'll notice the classrooms look just a little bit different. Spaces on the floor to make sure they know where they're supposed to be and keeping, um, appropriate social distance from one another. But working hard to try to, uh, engage them and, and working with each other, uh, just a little bit different looking than it's looked in the past, but we're so thrilled to have everyone back. Uh, again, another look at sort of choice and discovery time, a, a little more parallel play per se, uh, next to each other. Everybody gets their own materials, their bins of materials. And, uh, they are working with, uh, things they've chosen, um, and that, that sort of rotates day to day. And the teachers help them choose their bin of materials and, and they go to their space to, um, have their playtime. Still a lot of the things we're trying to incorporate ways to explore together and to collaborate. Um, so you know, we take, when we go outside, we try to find activities for students to engage together, to work together. Um, and, and obviously those are the nice mask breaks that we get for our students, but the first picture is from fire safety week, our students were drawing on the, um, drawing on the laptop and putting out fires. And, uh, that's leaf exploration on the walk down by WPS. So that's been a nice way to engage the students and get them collaborating together outside. And again, just trying to make sure that they're, you know, because they're playing sort of separate from one another, uh, inside with their own materials, trying to find ways outside to keep them together and to be collaborative for playing and problem solving together and, and those pieces. And again, just a fun, happy, happy faces to see outside and enjoying themselves together. Um, there's nice, there's nice workshops as, as Megan's mentioned, you know, you realize how many things the kids have missed out on. And so we've contracted with ASAP to come in and, uh, give the students special workshops throughout the course of the year. This is John Marshall, um, who's just an amazing, amazing guy that, that can do wonderful things with our students. So he did a drumming workshop, um, with our preschoolers. He was in twice. Um, we are going to have adventures through art history, um, soon. We're going to have, um, Flabalus is going to come in and do some dancing with us and we have, um, yo- yoga coming as well. So Reach is getting to have some, some fun sort of coming into school field trip kind of things and activities. Um, but they were really excited and they're having a really good time together doing that work. So SVP, our partnership is in full swing. We're back at work. So this is one of our students getting, uh, the billboard ready for outside of Salem Covenant Church. Uh, so we are at the church doing a little bit of work, um, both outside. Um, there's Pastor Linda with one of our students. And, um, also inside the church, a different student will do some work inside the church for, um, to support, uh, their work experience. We're also at the Mayflower Inn and Spa, uh, really excited to be there. Or you can see our student is really excited to be there. She really enjoys putting together the spa packets and taking care of the environment. So everybody has a really pleasant experience there. We're working back out at the gym, which is exciting because last year, if you guys were ever down at the depot at the market and you went outside, you saw the kids sort of walking around in front of the town hall, meeting up with Mrs. Beatty, doing a little dance and then going to the next circle. So this is fun to get back at, uh, getting, working out again at Phys Ed. So, um, it's just nice to be back and doing some of the things we've done in the past. We're also going out, uh, and experiencing the community and how to, uh, you know, enjoy our local restaurants and do, do, you know, able to order for ourselves, take care of our own needs in a location like that. And we're taking care of business and learning new things. So we've got our students at the ATM depositing their checks, we're taking out money. We're doing our own shopping, grocery shopping, taking care of our, um, paying our bill at the end of the, uh, uh, end of our shopping trip. Visiting other stores and doing some shopping. And then you'll notice the last picture is travel training that we do with the Kennedy Center to teach our students how to ride public transit, uh, and how to get from one place to point A to point B, um, using, uh, public transportation. We had one graduation party this year, um, and we have one more to come in a week. But that's how the year's gotten off to a start. So every, everything's going well. While it looks a little bit different because of COVID, we are making the best of it and moving forward and, you know, just making sure everybody gets what they need. Any questions?
It's just so great to see some normalcy again, but also just, it just confirms how wonderful the program is, the, um, to see the students down in the depot. It's just wonderful. And I'm so happy to see them back at the gym and it's just really makes me happy to see and to see the students back at Reach. I love the desks, but do you think that they'll keep the desks?
No, no.
That makes me a little happy.
No, no, they won't keep the desks. The kids, the kids sort of enjoy putting their things in the bag now, which is funny, but I think once they have tables there, they have a lot more place space. I think, I think they'll be happy for them.
Yeah, it's just really, I'm just so happy to see that everybody's back doing what they're doing and it's great to see.
It's great to have everyone back for sure.
And they're just, I mean, obviously they're both such wonderful programs and I just think they enrich our whole community. So thank you so much.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Other questions? Anyone else? I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Ellie, thank you. I mean, you have punted with more things during COVID and adjusted programs. And I know it broke your heart when we talked about Reach and reducing some of the opportunities and you continue to push for all of our students having these experiences. And we see happiness, we see children thriving and it's certainly under your leadership. And so, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I, I just want to add that this, when we talk about this really being the, the, the kind of school system that people want to have their kids in, these two programs are a critical part of that. And, uh, I, I think they're, they're, they're stellar. And I think they're stellar, and we are just lucky to have them. All right, we're going to move on to action items. The first one is to consider and if appropriate, approve a field trip request to the Model United Nations Conference in Cambridge, Massachusetts on January 27th to 30, 2021 for grades nine through 12.
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Is there a presentation or discussion or anything?
2022, right?
Yeah, that is correct. Thank you.
Whoops, you're correct. Correct. That is 2022. All right, well, if there's no further discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? I see no one abstaining and no one opposed. Chairman votes aye. It's unanimous. Next item, consider if appropriate, establish June 11, 2022 is the graduation date for the Chappagh class of 2022.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Jen, seconded by Lisa. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by, you know that will be established this date. This is the date. And if there are any, if there are snow days or other things that have wrecked the calendar, the seniors will still graduate on that date. And of course, they can come back to the Tenth School after that for the remainder of the year. Should they be so disposed? I do not think that we've ever had a senior come back after graduation if school continues. But there's, hope rings eternal. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? I see no one opposed or abstaining. It's therefore unanimous. To consider if an appropriate, approve the first reading and adoption of policies. I'm sorry?
First reading, we're not adopting them.
All right, so is, does anyone have a motion to consider the policies that have been presented to you for a first reading? We are going to have further discussion of these as we go along. So it's been moved by Jen. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Joe. Further discussion?
Yeah.
Yeah, Alex.
Anecdote, I mentioned the size of the paperwork that was handed out. And I said to somebody who was a lot younger, I said, the size of a New York City phone book. And they said to me, what's a phone book? But now, that's the levity. Are we expected to read this?
Every word.
So as we shared in our processes then, that we shared with everybody, the Shipman and Goodwin model policies. So we know that those are in place. As we went through anything that Shipman did not handle or cover, we brought in our current policies. So this is really that merger between the two. So if there is something that, as you've gone through, that does not look appropriate, if there's something that you'd like to pull out and bring into discussion, then we're certainly willing to do that. If you feel that second reads, you want to have us piecemeal those out. I'm certainly open to as a board, but at this point, our adoption of the Shipman and Goodwin model policies happened before COVID. We held off during COVID, but we really do want to do that transition over. And the foundation of this is Shipman and Goodwin policies.
Do you think we could get, maybe get a little cheat sheet here as to what policies are, we're adopting that are not in Shipman's list? And I'd really like to know why Shipman doesn't have policies on those points. I don't think it's from lack of diligence. I think they must have some thoughts as to why they don't do them.
Well, some of the policies, they don't have like our tuition in policy. That is very specific.
No, I get that one.
And there are certainly things that when we went through, we had six policies that Shipman Goodwin is able to cover under one policy. So, you know, this was sadly, that may be the New York phone book, our current policies to New York phone books. So it is, it is the attempt to now consolidate the efforts. But the question is, how do we want to handle this as a board? If we approve for the first reading and then going into the second, how it is best to digest this?
Yeah, I think we're going to need some, we're going to need to spend some time on these things. It's really an ugly situation because I hope we're not dragging in a lot of policies we don't need. I'm sure you're not. But it would be nice to know which are the ones that are not Shipman policies. This is a grim process.
I was going to say, we have a cheat sheet. We certainly made certain that we can track every single policy. So there's an Excel document that says where it is, where it's going. Debbie has been methodical about this. So if it's something which we look at the cheat, I can certainly provide that to the board in advance of going forward to our second readings.
Yeah, if you could provide it sooner rather than later. Because we have, our next meeting is the 15th, so we've only, we've only got two weeks between now and our next meeting.
Would it be better that we don't have this on the agenda?
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll talk about that. That would be my inclination is to put it on the agenda for the, for the December meeting, the 6th. Yes, Mary?
I just had a question of the Education Committee. We had talked about address code policy. Where is that?
That's in there. The word excessively is okay. It leaves it to interpretation. But it was one that it was okay to have that kind of ambiguity within it. That's a decision to the board. I see John's hand is up.
I'm sorry, John. I missed you. I missed that thing.
Megan, any anticipation, is there any kind of a deadline or, or something that we have to approve by a certain, in a certain timeframe for Shipman and Goodwin? Or I'm not, I think, and I agree with Alex, this is a huge manuscript. To read every page front and back, you know, it's going to take some time. Maybe we should approve this in, in series. The policies are divided into series. And I also noticed that Series 7,000 and 8,000 are blank and are marked as reserved. When are they going to be come to fruition?
Sorry, 8,000s are anything that's COVID related. So those are temporary policies that we've had in place. So those aren't policies that stick. So that's where they were put in. If the 7,000s are missing, I can certainly make certain that that's forwarded to you, if that was missing in your packet.
You know, another consideration is, and a parent came before the board a few meetings ago, addressed her concerns about some of the current policies. Where is the input from all of the stakeholders in the community on these policies? The parents have to deal with a lot of them themselves. And I feel, you know, that once they're instituted, we lose our autonomy. We become part of a generic statewide community. Every school district in the state shares these same exact policies. So I don't like that governance at all either. I'm going to vote no on it.
All right, well, I think, John, you know, what we had before is we had a body of policies. We had a policy committee that would, that would work on various policies at various times. And they would come in and report them. And over a period of time, over the years that I've been on the board, you get to know a lot of the policies you otherwise would know because they would come up a few at a time. Sometimes there'd be three, sometimes there'd be six, eight. And we would be talking about them in a meeting. Now, the, my only fear with this collection is, is that these policies will be adopted without anyone really understanding the nuances of them, simply because there isn't any time to go through the, I don't know, 8, 900 odd policies that are in that book and really get an understanding of it. But I think here is where, you know, we've got, you're right, John. We were, we were before governed by policies that were statewide, that, you know, through CAES organization. Now you're, you're getting policies that are in many ways somewhat similar, but prepared by legal counsel, our legal counsel. And I think that that's a, I think that's a good thing. But, but we're going to have to spend some time on these. And I'm sure there's going to be some things in there that no one is going to catch, that maybe you're not quite up to us. Megan, has the, has your administration spent a lot of time poring over these policies to make sure that we don't have anything that's inconsistent with our practice? Or if it is, that we, you know, that are flagged for us?
So just to kind of walk this back down memory lane, before COVID, we had made the decision to shift, shift over to Shipman and Goodwin. Because we would take the CAE policies, we would run it through the board. And then we asked to have Shipman look it over. And then, so we were paying for two policies. And so the board had made the decision, since Shipman is going to have to legally represent us, to then utilize Shipman's policies, since that is in the court of law, who would be defending their own policies. We had spent the entire year pulling together, going section by section, between Shipman's policies, CAES, to make certain that we put our hands on every single document to review what we have, to review our practices. This also, Shipman does a really nice job of having what is the policy versus what is the procedure. And so we want to make certain that it is not just the policies, but also the regulations and procedures on how it's going to be administered. So it does give a little bit more understanding between what is the governing role and what is the practice that happens within that governing role. And so we did go through the, all of the documents. But when I say to you, this is when the board approved going to Shipman about 18 months ago, if not a little bit more than, we have been taking that time to transition over. So what the board received back in August to look this over and then what you're seeing now. So we've been trying to get this where it's a little bit more digestible. But I will say to you, it is a huge undertaking. And so it is one that I'm not trying to say, trust me moments. So however the board is most comfortable, John, there's not a deadline, but it does put us in limbo. And you did bring up the fact that we have a parent who did talk to us about the technology policy. And this is something that we were shifting over, and we haven't done anything with it because we knew we were accepting a new policy. So it leaves us in this land of limbo of holding on to something that we know we shouldn't be because we know that policy changeover is happening. So it just comes down to how the board wants to adopt it. But I'm going to say, if it's not comfortable going this way, then we're going to have to develop. And I would say if this is something that brings the board more comfort, is to develop a policy committee who goes through this again and then create something that makes people feel better as we go through this process. Happy to do that, but I think at some point, it needs to move into action because we're really, as a governance body, in limbo between two things. We are between CAE and Ship.
Lisa?
I just have to say, Megan, that I was on the committee for years, and, and I don't want to go back there. Were you on the committee too, Jen? Okay, but it's, it was so time consuming, and I feel like we're going in a circle because we ended up going with Shipman because of the CAE policies and everything you just said. For us to go back to a committee with, and for John just to outright say he's not going to vote on it, it's, it makes no sense to me. So I think we need to figure out as a board that we agreed on and voted on to accept Shipman. So somehow we have to figure this out because it's, it's a lot to go through, but a committee is, is not, I don't think, the right way to go.
Yeah, it seems to me that when we, when we had the CAE policies last time, and I was a frequent person who would pull things out of, you know, out of left field and a lot of legal issues. There's a lot of legality. There's a lot of legal issues in those policies. And the problem I had was, is that the answer the policy committee had frequently was, well, I mean, CAE has got these lawyers that prepare these things. It's, you know, I'm sure that they have, they've looked at it. But the difficulty I had was, is the CAE lawyers didn't represent us. They, they, they were CAES lawyers. And so while these policies might make sense from the standpoint of what you're trying to do in one given area, the CAE lawyers were not the ones going into court to defend us on those policies or to, to make sure that our children were protected under those policies, whereas the Shipman lawyers are. And so I, I was heartened by the fact that their book was half the size of the CAE book because I always felt we had too many policies. So John, I share your thoughts on that, that I think there were too many. Now, a lot of these policies, probably, I, my guess is about 70% of them are policies that try to enact what's in the law that governs us. So it's not like we have a choice. I mean, it's nice to say, well, I don't want to be governed by policies. But if the law says you've got to do X, you're better off having a policy that explains X so the people who have to implement it don't have to guess. And so I think that's what most of them are. But then there are a few where at the margins, you can tinker with them. And those are the ones we might want to look for.
Maybe we start with those.
I'm not sure which ones they are until I read them.
Well, like the, the computer, the technology policy that was brought before us. You know, that seems like one that we probably should start with and bring that to the board for reading. And because that was a concern, but you're right. Most of them are mandated policies that we don't really have a say in. But if we can maybe go through and kind of pick a list of which ones we absolutely need to tailor to Chappagh or to our region, that's where I would start.
Jen?
So forgive me if this is a question that's already been addressed. But if we were to, if there was a concern about a certain policy that as we move forward, can we look at that policy, that specific policy and then make it with the way we want to as we move forward? So for example, if a parent or somebody comes to us and brings something to our attention, it's not like we're, we can't readjust it, correct?
Oh, of course. We, we can, we can always play with the policies. The only, the only thing is on some of them, when, when they stray into the legal areas, we need to make sure our council is on board with it. But no, there's no reason why we can't reexamine those things.
So my point is, is that what we're doing is, is we're really, we're, we're adopting these policies that have been vetted. And, and then if something were to arise that we had a concern about, or if I wanted to change to make it more Chappagh friendly, or however we want to say it, we can absolutely do that. So I, I don't know what the, the argument is.
No, I don't think there's an argument.
I know an argument, but I'm saying if John's concerned about that issue, then that's something that we can still address as we move forward. We don't need to digest every single one now and then make a decision. We can, we can play with it as we move on.
Well, I was going to guess what John thinks, but instead I'll recognize him. John?
After what Lisa and Jennifer suggested, if we can revise some of these policies if they don't work out, I, my, my concern still is about Series 7,000 that is blank. And I don't know what's going to occur in the future as far as that, that goes. Can we vote on the entirety with the exception of Series 7,000 then?
Well, John, if it's blank, there's nothing in there. So what are we concerned about?
Is there going to be something added at some future date? I'm not understanding it.
Greg?
I'm sorry.
Wasn't the, the information that Megan sent to us in August, didn't it contain all this information that we were supposed to look at? And it contained 7,000 and 8,000. And we were supposed to read that. And I did. It was a lot, but I sat there and I read it. Some of it I just skimmed over, but, but there was information in there and we were supposed to look at that.
7,000 says it's reserved.
Somebody didn't look at it. How can they say anything about it? I don't get it.
Well, I'll put it this way. Everybody's got the book.
Sorry, line. So what we, we printed out for you was just the shipment. That was just the shipment model policy. So you could see what was the generic, this is what everything was. But we did have the numbers that coincided to the change. So what we did was for every single CAE policy, we aligned it to. So that way there, if you were looking and you wanted to see the bullying policy, the number's still the same. It's just Shipman's bullying policy. So we went through and we numbered to make certain that there was that alignment. But you have all of the numbers that are Shipman's model policies. That is in your booklet. And then what you also have is in the hybrid, that was the electric document, the electronic document that Debbie shared with you that has both the, the policies we needed to retain from CAE because they were specific to Region 12, and we're not part of Shipman's model policy. So that's what you have, the digital version. The digital version that you received is the policy manual in its totality.
Didn't it contain seven thousand?
Yeah, and seven thousand, uh, the naming of a facility, you know? There is the eight thousand, as I said, those are for temporary COVID. Um, so about our mask policies, um, things that were purposely put there. So that way, when we're out of the pandemic, we know that the eight thousands can be sunset. So that was the reason, rather than bearing it within our policy manual. So it was to show the alignment and to be able to be transparent in that policymaking.
Alright, well, we'll get an opportunity to look through these again and um, and to discuss them at the meeting of uh, in the, the sixth of December.
Can I just say two more things?
Okay. Um.
In regards to.
Next item on the agenda is, I'm sorry, John, are you?
Sorry. In regards to Mary's comment about if you didn't read it, it's, it's, it's your problem. If I would have known before Friday that I had to read this and vote on it tonight, I would have read it. And I still um, am questioning how seven thousand and eight thousand are marked as reserved? What? What is going to happen with those two sections, series? In the future?
John, when you, when you reserve a section, you, you leave that section for future use in the event you need to include that section. In the case of eight, it, it's, it's temporary COVID policies. If, if something else like COVID comes up or something different where we need a set of policies on it, you know, we'll have an, an, you know, an empty, an empty slot to put those in. That's the idea of reserving space.
Well, why aren't the temporary COVID policies in there then?
I mean, we don't need to fill those up. We can leave them, you know, unfilled if necessary. Um, alright, uh, any further questions or discussion about this uh, policies? Because otherwise I want to move on. We've got other things on the agenda. And we have an executive session. It's likely to be somewhat long, so. Alright, um, the next item is to consider it if appropriate, approve, approve an increase. Oh, I'm sorry. No, there's nothing, there's nothing moved and seconded. Um, actually, number three is to approve for a first reading. So we don't really vote on that. We just let it go. And we take a vote if necessary on the second reading. There's no motion. It's kind of a semi non-action item. Okay, now on to number four. Consider it if appropriate, uh, approve of the increase for new tuition in students at Shapog Valley for grades nine through twelve from seventy-five to eight thousand, beginning for the twenty twenty-two and twenty twenty-three school year. Uh, Julie, you indicated we also had one on the middle school. So why don't we do them separately?
Okay.
Unless you think we should do them together on.
Uh, well, we've talked about it all the way through together.
Okay, well then, why, why don't we add to that and to, and to approve uh, for the middle school grade six through, through eight? Um, an increase from six thousand to sixty-five hundred?
Correct.
Okay. So uh, is there a motion to put that on the table for discussion? I heard Jen. Now, let's, let's talk about it. Does anyone want to give us the idea?
Yeah, so we've been talking about the tuition policy for quite some time and most of it we've left absolutely the same. Although we consider changing it from time to time and solidifying some of the language, but we felt strongly that the new facility at Shapog warrants a modest increase. We have more applicants than we have openings. And it just seemed to be more competitive with, with what others are charging. So we felt very confident that the middle and high school could have a modest increase. Elementary is a little different. The facilities haven't changed. Um, but, but we as a group felt that this was a good modest increase.
Anybody have any questions? Or concerns or whatever? Um, hearing none? Uh, why don't we uh, go on to a vote? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstaining? I see none opposed. I see none abstaining. Um, so it's unanimous. Number five, consider and if appropriate, approve seven thousand dollars from the um, this is the one percent fund, right? I, I don't know what CNR is, um, continuing capital non-recurring? No? I don't know what C, but CNR, what does that stand for? Capital non-recurring. Okay, so the elementary fund. Um, well, we, we need a dictionary here. Uh, to, to pay for a new fire system for Burnham Elementary School. Um, is, actually, it shouldn't say Burnham Elementary School. That isn't the specific name, isn't the name. The Burnham School is really what it should be. Okay, is there a motion to approve the seven thousand dollars from the, from the CNR for want of a better term? Uh, moved by Joe. Is there a second? Seconded by Jen. Um, okay, um, we, we, we need this new fire system. Uh, that's why we have the elementary fund. And Don, do you want to give us your thoughts on it?
It's um, it's, it's not a new fire system. It should read, uh, pay for um, upgrades of the existing fire alarm system for Burnham Elementary School.
Can you elaborate on the need?
So um, the existing fire alarm system for Burnham Elementary was put in during the elementary repairs project back in, in around two thousand and ten. Um, since that time, the um, devices that have been used are, have been phased out and are no longer available. Uh, so what's happened is that the standard fifty dollar smoke detector is now five hundred dollars on eBay. Uh, so so uh, it's not a good use of the district's funds. Um, it's, it's smarter to um, upgrade the motherboard with a new software program that allows the addition of new bases and new heads in the existing system without rewiring the school. It's the, the best use of the district's funds to move forward and uh, uh, upgrade the system.
Okay. So we're going to change that motion with the, with the consent of the movement and the uh, seconder uh, to consider it if appropriate, approve seven thousand dollars from the CNR fund to pay for an up, to pay for the upgrade of the existing fire alarm system for the Burnham School. Okay, so if there's no objection, that'll be the motion. Is there uh, further discussion? Alright, um, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All those abstaining? I did not see any opposition. John, I saw you move. Were you opposing or?
No, just scratching.
I'm sorry, are you? I, I can't, couldn't hear what you said. Are you in favor or opposed?
I'm in favor, totally in favor of it.
John, you're, you're muted.
Totally in favor.
Still didn't hear. Okay, I think he said aye. Am I correct? You're in favor? Yes, okay, good. I hope we can't hear him at all, even when he's unmuted. Okay. Uh, alright, uh, all those opposed, abstaining. I see no opposed or abstaining. It's unanimous. It's approved. Number six, consider and if appropriate, approve Shell's signature authorization. This is the principal Donald Shell's signature authorization for student activities account at the Shapog Valley School. Um, well, when you have a new principal, you need to approve them on a signatory basis on the bank account, so. Is there a motion?
I'm moved.
Moved by Alex or second? Seconded by Joe.
Moved by Alex, seconded by Joe. Is there further discussion?
All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining, please so indicate. No abstaining, no opposed. It's unanimous and Principal Shells can now sign checks. Alright, at this point, is there a motion to go into executive session to discuss the superintendent's goals for twenty twenty-one, twenty-two? To discuss a matter of personnel and to discuss a statement for legal services? Okay, moved by Mary. Is there a second? Seconded by, um, it's not debatable. Uh, let's um, all those. Oh, that's a good point. We're inviting in Megan. Do we need anyone else? No, that's it. Just Megan Bennett, superintendent. Okay, um. Thank you for reminding me of that. I always forget who we're going to bring in. Uh, okay, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say nay. All those abstaining? Okay, that's no, none abstaining, none, none opposed. It's uh, it's a required two-thirds vote. So we're going to go into executive session now for these items.